Welcome everyone to our city council meeting. If we could have...
So he can do wedding?
Bye please. Welcome everybody to the city council meeting for Monday, February 24th. We could have a roll call to the Saturday forum, please ma'am.
Bob Thomas?
Here.
Terry McClung?
I'm here.
Mickey Snyder?
Yep.
Susan Harmon?
Here.
Melissa Green?
Here.
Harry Meyer?
Here.
We have six.
All right. We can stand for the pledge allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Get a motion to approve the agenda?
Oh, no.
Second.
I have, right after the approval of the minutes, I've got to do a little award ceremony on the awards we receive. I'd like to insert that. And also toward the end of our meeting, we need to set the dates for a couple of workshops on there for Parks and also the hospital. Does anybody else have anything? Get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor, sing five of saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So I'm going to get a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any additions, corrections, errors? Hearing none. All those in favor of the minutes that submitted, sing five of saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Recently, we attended the Arkansas Municipal League Conference in Little Rock where the City of Eureka Springs was recognized for a lot of good works that we had done. And it's with a lot of pride and gratitude that these awards are being shared publicly here this evening. First of all, I'd like to see if the representative for Native Plant Gardens, and I know we have several, who would stand up and come up here for a moment and join me.
You can hold that to them.
The Native Plant Garden Project began about four years ago with two main objectives. The first was to provide a community educational resource by transforming a neglected right-of-way in downtown Eureka Springs into vibrant ecological and neglected, what wasn't neglected, into productive public green space. With support from the city, donors, and volunteers that neglected its place along its plants along First Street, they've been transformed by planting that attracts birds, bees, butterflies, and other beneficial wildlife. The second objective was to give others the knowledge to do this themselves and offer a variety of interesting gardening opportunities. The project has hosted three native plant fairs. These popular events offer native plant vendors, expert speakers, and a way for native plant gardeners to exchange information. It's with great pleasure for me to present the Eureka Springs Native Plant Garden Project with the Twin Cities City Award for Environmental Green Management Practice. Congratulations. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
All your hard work. All right. Would the representative of the Arts Council please come up? Enjoy. Eureka Springs Arts Program is a collaboration of Eureka Springs Arts Council, City of Eureka Springs City Advertising Promotion Mission, and Eureka Springs High School Arts Club and local arts. The program highlights North Main Interactive Music Park, the Four Instruments and Yard Bomb, Wood City, the interactive augments Reality Art Wall on First Street, the Rainbow Stairs from Center to Main, and the month-long May Festival of the Arts. All these components become woven into the fabric of our wonderful funky little town, not only attracting tourism but also improving the quality of life for our citizens. The Twin Cities City Award in the category is Tourism Development Creative Cultures awarded to the Arts Council, C A P C, Eureka Springs Arts Club, and local artists. Congratulations. Hey, one of my favorite and here to my heart would be to represent the mayor's task force of economic development. Please sign your board. In Eureka Springs, the mayor's task force of economic development identifies two great community needs: health care, healthy community, and affordable housing. These needs are being addressed by volunteers at Echo Clinic and Echo Village, Eureka Christian Hope Base. Currently, Echo Clinic operates with over 200 volunteers serving over 1,000 patients a year. Echo Clinic provides the following services: medical, dental, optometry, medical, minimal, community service, Spanish translation, and a fully licensed pharmacy. The clinic also operates a thrift store providing quality clothing, medical aids, and furniture at affordable prices. Thrift store gift back and participating in the school clothing voucher programs. Echo Village is a model of sustainable cooperative community of small homes. The first phase is complete. Ultimately, the project will consist of 26 small, energy-efficient homes with a central community center. The village houses young families, seniors, disabled, homeless, veterans, and prison release. There's community gardens, in-house shop, and eating rooms, and exercise area. Both Echo Clinic and Echo Village have vast array of volunteers. Age range from eight to eighty. Echo Clinic has logged in almost 240,000 hours of volunteer help since its inception in 2005. Echo Village has over 20,000 volunteer hours logged in since its creation in June 2018. The Arkansas Volunteer Community of the Year Award is designed to recognize municipalities that seek to address the areas of greatest need within their community through impact-minded volunteer activities. The awards are sponsored by the governor's, office of the governor, the Governor's Advisory Commission on National Service and Volunteering, Engage Arkansas, and Arkansas Municipal League. And the recipient of the Arkansas Volunteer Community of the Year Award was for Echo. Congratulations. Thank you all very much.
Well, Sandy's going to ask you to wait.
For all that don't know, our volunteer architect is... All right. That brings us up to our next item is an application for Mark X for the Planning Commission on Division Three. Mr. Thomas?
Oh, I would move to approve Mark X's application for planning.
Any discussions? All those in favor of Mark Six being on the planning commission, sing five of saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We do have a couple of vacancies on the parks which will expire May the first. Actually, that's quite a ways away. It looks like H D C will have an expiration on March 7th for a couple of positions. That brings us to public comments. Please limit your time to three minutes.
My name is Craig Cox. Members of the council, I am here tonight to request assistance to resolve an ongoing issue brought to the city's attention for 11 months, only to be ignored, misinformed, and misled. Beginning in March of 2019, I spoke with Mr. Winnebooth and Mr. Bobby Ray regarding Mr. Joel Walker not conforming to his plans and using my property on Fuller Street. Mr. Ray directed me to Mr. Dwayne Allen with Public Works. Meetings were continuously postponed and delayed between Mr. Allen and Mr. Walker. In June, I received an email from Mr. Allen advising he met with Mr. Walker stating Mr. Walker has decided to move his drive. I continued to follow up with Mr. Allen when the drive was not moved. Following multiple requests for an update, Mr. Allen sent my request back to Mr. Ray. Following multiple requests for an update, Mr. Ray finally advised in July he would not issue a certificate of occupancy until Mr. Walker moved his drive as per his plan, approved plans for the new construction. I continued to communicate with Mr. Ray without resolution. In November, Mr. Ray told me he did not know if he could legally withhold Mr. Walker's certificate of occupancy and deferred me back to Mr. Allen. I have spoken to the police regarding trespassing and Judge Barr has recommended by Eureka Springs Police Department regarding the situation. Judge Barr said that in his opinion, this was a city matter. Police reports were filed for no trespassing signs on my property being pulled up and discarded. I expressed concerns to Mr. Barry, Mr. Allen, and Mr. Ray in January and February of 2020 of my being ignored in addition to tenants, contractors, and public works vehicles continuing to use my property for a drive, parking, and their materials. I included photos to the involved city officials. The mayor is just last week in an email stated it is not city's responsibility to ensure accuracy of any drawings submitted. Therefore, no one is held accountable to follow through with any approved plans. Mr. Walker is using our private property for his personal profit. I am requesting assistance from the council to have the city enforce approved plans, make citations for nonconformity to those plans, along with any deviation in approved tree removal, and to ensure Mr. Walker is allowed to use his own, use only his property and the city alley per his plans. I hope none of my fellow residents ever have to endure the time and trouble of dealing with city officials ignoring and turning a blind eye to their concerns or issues with their property. It seems our efforts to resolve this issue has continuously been swept under the rug by Eureka Springs city officials, including Mayor Barry. Thank you, and I'd like to thank all my fellow residents for showing up and my support.
Hello. I just came here tonight to take a few minutes to introduce myself formally to the city council and to the community at large. I am April Griffith. I am the director of the Carnegie Public Library. I was hired as the replacement for Loretta Crenshaw in September of 2019. And when I talk about the library, you might think that's the place where people go and check out books, check their email, check out DVDs. But in truth, it's much deeper than that. At the library, we connect people in Eureka Springs and Holiday Island with ideas and information that help them discover what makes their life meaningful. So for example, we'll talk about a patron. We'll call her Heather because we greatly respect patron confidentiality. She's a young Native American mother of two young children. She moved here a year, two years ago. And Heather was a stay-at-home mom, but she needed a way to generate extra income for her family to make ends meet. The library helped Heather find books and information on making traditional Native American crafts and knitting books. So Heather mastered those techniques, and she started selling her wares at the farmer's market and meeting other people in town. She put up flyers in the library advertising authentic Native American-made moccasins, and I saw a lot of people take the little tags from her flyer. And in 2019, the Carnegie Library checked out just under 78,000 items to people in Eureka Springs and our surrounding community. And I'm not saying that every single one of those helps someone start their own small business or change their life significantly, but I know that many of those items did. I have a myriad of these stories. You can pick a demographic, and I can tell you about a senior citizen named Brian whom we helped, Isaac, a little boy, just anyone you can think of. I can name how we've connected them with meaningful information that has helped them. So, and that means a lot to us as a library. And it's been pointed out to me recently that our Carnegie Library is pretty special because we proudly provide free personal service to every person who walks through our door, and we value each and every patron, not only as a neighbor but as an individual with unique needs. So that's why I wanted to tell you about what your library does. And if you haven't been there lately, you should stop in because we're there for you, and we want to connect people to what makes their life meaningful. Thank you.
Pat Costner, that's a hard act to follow because what I will say is boring to the max, but I'm compelled. This has to do with the shuttles at Leatherwood. In 2017, in the general ledger, recreational programming had only two entries which totaled $3,000. They were two soccer goals. The ledger had no shuttle service expense category. In 2018, the Parks General Ledger had recreational programming expense category that had a total of more than $34,000, with 21 of 22 expense items identified as shuttle service. Whereas their shuttle service expense category given in the ledger shows a total of a bit over $23,000. I went through painstakingly this 2018 ledger and compiled all expenses related to the shuttle service and found that they totaled more than $60,000. And in the ledger, the income category, the total shuttle income for 2018 was $2,935. In 2019, the recreational programming expense category showed a total of $3,000 for four items, two for reimbursing shuttle bug drivers and two for shuttle service. The shuttle service expense category has a list of 39 items that totaled $71,201.15. Thirty-one of the items are shuttle service or driver reimbursement, and eight are identified as shuttle turnaround construction. When I compiled all the expense items that are based on their descriptions integral to shuttle service, I came up with a total of $19,000, nearly $20,000. When added to the currently reported total for shuttle service of $71,000-some-odd dollars, you have a total expenditure for shuttle service of at least $90,800-some-odd dollars. Whereas the income for the shuttle in 2019 was $42,000. So I just want to emphasize to you that Parks has a real money-losing proposition with the shuttles. The shuttles are not recreational programming. They are a service. They are a convenience for downhill riding, mountain biking riders who have the option to take, ride their bikes uphill. Thank you.
Do you want me to just step down?
All right. That concludes our public here, our public comments. For the evening, our new business begins with item number one, Integrity Solar Power Project Updates. Get a motion to discuss?
Motion to discuss.
Second.
Flint Richter is here to give us kind of a rundown on this resolution that we have and the, with the solar service agreement.
Thank you, Mayor.
I'll leave it off to you.
All right. Thank you very much.
It's way above my head. Please.
Well, thank you for your time tonight, and congratulations to the city for all the great awards. Always love this place. Looks like a lot of other people in the state do as well. As Mayor said, Mayor Barry said, my name's Flint Richter, live in Fayetteville, work with Integrity Energy Partners. I'm the head of their solar division. We were chosen through an R F P process last year to do an energy services project for the city of Eureka Springs. So I'm here tonight to present on the first part of that, energy services, energy savings project. The first part is the solar project that we're bringing forward tonight. There will be a second part, which will be energy savings through LED lighting, HVAC savings, and then other metrics which could save the city money through energy savings. The solar project will be focusing on the SWEPCO accounts and the Carelectric accounts that the city currently is paying. Right now, the city's using over a million kilowatt-hours of energy in a year, and we're looking to offset about 80% of that through what we call a solar service agreement. So these solar service agreements are new in the state. They were implemented by the legislature in July of last year. It allows a third-party owner, so that would be Integrity Energy Partners, to own the solar array, to produce energy, and then sell an entity that energy at a fixed rate. So we would buy the array, pay to have it installed, and we would maintain the array for 25 years. Only thing the city has to do is to buy the energy that comes out of the array at a guaranteed cost. So this project is going to have a guaranteed cost of energy, and then it'll have a 25-year term. The city can buy the array at the end of the fifth year if they wish to. We could stay on to operate and maintain the array. But typically, cities just go into the contract for 25 years and buy the power from us. So this was, this solar services agreement, this act was passed in order to allow non-tax paying entities like a city, a university, a school district to take advantage of the solar tax credits that are available right now. So people that pay federal taxes can take advantage of those directly. Schools, cities, universities cannot. So we're involved in close to 100, developing 100 of these projects right now because they're so popular. There's a lot of savings to be had. So the city is looking at around $14,000 savings the first year. So we are very conservative when we look at these projects. Over the past 14 years, SWEPCO has increased their utility rates at around 2.4%. So electrical rates from SWEPCO have gone up at a rate of 2.4% per year over the last 14 years. We are basing our savings in this solar service agreement on utility escalation at 1%. So I want to make that clear that our savings calculations are based on a very conservative 1% escalation from the utility. Our solar rate escalates at 1% as well. So our solar rate goes up by 1% per year, and we're guaranteeing that our rate will start at 5.6 cents for the SWEPCO accounts and 5.3 cents for the Carelectric accounts. And then we'll increase at 1% per year from then on. And then we get, we are modeling the savings from these accounts to be based on the utility escalating at 1% as well. If the utility escalates at 2%, you'll see more savings. If it escalates at 3%, you'll see even more savings than that. If utility rates go down, you won't see savings, but it's been a while since we've seen utility rates go down. So this is kind of a way to purchase solar energy at a guaranteed rate for long-term for the city. So neither of these arrays would be placed in the city. Due to the beautiful terrain in Eureka Springs, which I tend to love, it doesn't really lend itself to solar very well. So the water treatment plant is probably one of the worst examples. It's kind of in a holler, which is beautiful, and there's not a lot of available land down there, but there's a lot of load there. So these would be placed off-site at land that we would purchase. Integrity would purchase the land, we'd build the array, we'd maintain it for 25 years, and then all Eureka has to do is actually just buy the energy from us at a guaranteed rate. So I believe legal counsel has gone through our contract and looked at that, and so I'm here tonight to introduce the project and hopefully seek approval. Are there any questions? Yes, ma'am.
Yeah. If you would clarify so the people can understand, okay, and let's just for now deal with SWEPCO. We have all these power lines all over town and going to our houses. Do those lines stay there and the solar hooks through there or what?
Yes, ma'am. So that's a great question. So all of the utility infrastructure stays as it is. SWEPCO delivers you power as normal to all the accounts that you have. We would find a spot on SWEPCO's distribution lines somewhere. It might be, you know, outside Fayetteville. It could even be as far away as El Dorado. So it has to be in SWEPCO's service territory. At that point, we inject the solar power into their utility lines in a meter. The catch is that it goes through a meter that's in the city of Eureka's name. And so it goes into that meter, and those credits are then applied back to a list of meters that we give them. So it's a billing transaction is how it works.
Okay. So for the regular residents in town, do they get their monthly bill from SWEPCO or from you?
These are only for city accounts.
Oh, that's okay. See, that was, yeah, that's the one I was missing.
Individual taxpayers can take advantage of the tax credits and stuff.
So streetlights and stuff.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So the residents themselves don't have to worry about messing with anything?
No, they do not.
Okay.
But they will know that their tax pay, their taxes that they're paying are going to buy clean energy at a lower price than what they're paying SWEPCO right now for the coal-produced energy. That's the benefit I see to the general public.
It gets very confusing.
It is very confusing. I'm not a lawyer. I'm a solar person. I've been in this 20 years, and so I'm not a lawyer, for sure.
Ms. Harmon?
I have two questions, one's for you, Butch. But I'll direct the first one at you. You said 14K for the first year savings is what you're estimating?
Yes, ma'am.
What is the average? Do you have an average per year? Are you saying that first year we'll save 14? Will it go up or will it stay flat based on your?
Oh, I'm going to refer to my crib notes here.
Is that on, are you looking at? Okay, go ahead.
I'm not sure what you have in front of you, but...
Well, I was just looking at your rates on page 36 of the, you had mentioned those before.
I'm just looking at the SWEPCO account right now. So it starts out the first year with savings of $6,892 the first year.
Okay.
And this is at 1% escalation for the utility and 1% escalation for our rate as well. So then it goes from, to $6,926 the next year, and it continues to increase through time until we end up with $7,759 at year 25.
At 25.
And the Carelectric was about the same. The Carelectric, you buy more electricity from them because of the water treatment plant. So it started at 7,575, and then it increases over time up to $8,528 to year 25.
Okay. All right. And then, Butch, I just have a question. Can you just clarify, this is for, what will be covered? So Mickey mentioned, when she was talking about residential, we're talking about lights, we're talking about transit?
Anything that we get, anything that we get an electric bill for.
Okay. So that's typically, but you did mention it is not including the hospital at this point?
Not at this time. They're coming in and doing, when we, we hadn't had the hospital under our jurisdiction, so we couldn't go in and do an analysis on it. And they have done an analysis, and we're meeting this week or trying to meet this week or next week to do the hospital. But that will be an addendum.
Right.
To this.
Yes, it will.
And that will come back before us as an addendum, correct?
Yes. Yes, it will.
Mr. McClan?
Two questions. One, your performance bonded?
Yes, sir. We have 30 billion, sorry, we're an energy services company, that's, we're the energy division of Napol's Construction. So that gives us.
I remember that now, yeah. Okay, and then the second one was, I guess, that y'all sell those tax credits? Is that what you do?
We bring in investors, so there are investors in the world looking to invest in these and get the tax credits. So yes, we bring in tax credit investors. They help us build the arrays. They have to stay in the deal for five years, and then we buy them out, and then we own these long-term. And operate and maintain them. Yes, sir.
How does demand charge fit into this? And fuel surcharges in the summer and so forth down at our sewer plant? Half of the bill at the sewer plant is the demand charge, so.
It is. It's a Carol rate of 402, and it has a pretty high demand charge, about $9 per kilowatt.
Right.
And so we will not be able to affect that at all with this plan because the array is off-site. So we only get demand savings if we inject that power on the load side of the meter, behind the meter.
That's what I thought.
Yep. So we are, as part of our energy services, energy savings program, we're working with the city, we're looking at actually upgrading the generators on-site to get demand savings. There may be another energy savings measure there. We are looking into that as part of it. We find that a lot with water treatment plants. They have a generator already that is there for backup power. A lot of times, if you can upgrade it or change the muffler system actually, to get it up to an EPA standard, where it can be used to produce power during peak times and peak shave. So that's part of what our energy engineering team is working on right now, but there will not be any demand savings from the solar, unfortunately. You know, when we have a good, flat site that's near the meter, then of course we do that. But these are tracking arrays. They need a really wide-open horizon-to-horizon view of the sun, because they start working about 6:30 in the morning. Since the sun comes up, they start working and track the sun through the day. So when we're in a ravine or any type of even heavy trees on the east and west, these, the financials don't work out, unfortunately.
Sure. Yeah, so the cleaning and maintenance of the, these arrays is a big deal, too.
It is.
So you're going to have to have somebody.
Especially with the trackers, sensors, and motors.
Yeah.
And that's why, you know, we put a fence around these, we maintain everything within the fence. We only get paid for the energy if it comes out of the array. So if it's malfunctioning, or if, you know, parts are breaking, then we have to make it a priority to fix it in order to, you know, keep getting paid for electricity that.
One more question. How many of these arrays have you done?
We have done this, the SSA. We are building our fourth one right now. Done about five megawatts of these right now, the style of system.
Any other questions?
Mr. McClan? I might go ahead and make a motion that we assign the resolution to number and read for passage.
Second.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Harmon?
Yes.
Mr. McClan?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
6-0. The resolution number will be 773. A resolution adopting the solar services agreement between Integrity Energy Partners LLC and the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas. Whereas the city council of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas wishes to continue to adopt a plan to mitigate the costs of future electrical needs of the city. Whereas the city has a working relationship with Integrity Energy Partners LLC. Whereas the entities have a plan to take advantage of certain tax credits to be used to add in the development and operation of a solar installation. And whereas the mayor and city council have likewise participated in the plan development and have determined that adoption and implementation of the solar services agreement is in the public interest. Now therefore, be it resolved that the document entitled Solar Services Agreement, along with the attached exhibits, are hereby adopted for the city of Eureka Springs, and that the mayor of the city of Eureka Springs is hereby authorized to execute the instrument and take whatever other action may be necessary to complete the agreement.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your time. Look forward to working with you.
All right, that brings us up to our next item, is a memorandum of understanding with Carroll Boone Water District. Get a motion to discuss.
Hello.
Second.
Mr. Olson, I believe is here, representing the Carroll Boone Water District.
Good evening. My name is Chris Hall. I'm an engineer with Olson. And if that doesn't sound familiar, we used to be McGinn, Williams &amp; Yates. We've represented Carroll Boone Water District since their inception. And as the mayor alluded to, the four-member cities, which is Eureka Springs, Barryville, Harrison, and Green Forest, signed a memorandum of understanding many years ago. And in that memorandum, it states that any time that the district increases its indebtedness, that they have to come in front of the city councils and have a resolution passed for them to increase their debt. And I will say, I've learned, that I need to say right off the bat, that rates are not going to be increased, so that we'll get that out of the way, and then I'll tell you about the projects that we have on task here. So, but, the master plan that our company did in 2019 identified three different projects that need to be completed within the next year, or the next, this first phase, which is the first five years. One of these projects is a generation project at the plant, at both plants. Right now, they have generators that don't just do backup. They also do load shedding, which saves money for the district each year during the summer months. And there are certain EPA requirements that we have to get those up to, tier-four requirements. And we're also going to increase the number of generators at the plants so that they'll have enough to actually do all of the processes that they have. As of now, when they go into load shedding, they actually lose ground in the system. And so as the system grows, this is one of the areas that we want to tighten up. So this project was supposed to be done about two or three years ago, but because of the big parallel line project that we just completed a couple of years ago, we pushed it back. So it's come back around, so we're trying to get that one funded as well. The other project is continuing the 36-inch parallel line. We're going to put another mile or so in, and between Green Forest and, or Barryville and Green Forest. And so, and the third project is at the intake pump station. We're increasing, taking out one of the smaller pumps and increasing the size. So those three projects, right now, the way we're going to fund this is they have bonds, and they're going to refinance one of their bonds, and they're going to increase the life of this bond. What that does is, is that we're going to get a better interest rate. The payment for this bond is going to be basically the same. It's going to be very negligible increase, but they're going to absorb this increase. And so that's how we're going to fund this. This is going to free up the $5 million that will be for these three projects. So with that, there is not going to be an increase in the rates at this moment, as long as the interest rates stay the way they are. And that's one of the reasons we wanted to visit all four cities as quickly as possible. We have a special board meeting, 1st of March, to get, once we have all resolutions. I've already visited the other three cities. This is the final one. And so we'll be able to lock this rate in at the 1st of March, it being a election year. These rates are kind of volatile, or will become more and more volatile the closer we get to election. So that's one of the important reasons for getting out here and getting this thing done as quickly as possible. So with that, I'll entertain any questions that anyone has about these projects.
Ms. Harmon?
When you're talking about your rates, you're not able to lock your rate in now? I mean, it's almost the first. So they're saying?
No, we have to get, we have, the MOU, we have to get this, we have to get three of the four cities' approval resolution before we can.
Where you can lock it in?
Yeah, before we can do anything.
Okay.
And that's why, March 9th or 10th, we're having a special board meeting. And so, once we do that, because the board meeting isn't actually till the end of April. They do it every three months. So we're going to do a special board meeting because we don't feel comfortable waiting that long.
Waiting, okay.
So.
And then my other question is, the, when you're talking about purchasing or lowering your interest rate, hopefully.
Yes.
On those bonds, is the term changing?
Yes, yeah, they are, they are, the term will lengthen.
And by how, how much?
That's a good question. I don't have an answer for you, but I can find out one.
Till I get the numbers, right?
Well, I mean, I'm hoping they kind of know where they.
Oh, they do. Yeah, I just, and actually, I thought about that on the way up here, and I just, it kind of.
Yeah, okay.
You don't remember that aspect of it, but.
Anyone else?
Yes, sir.
This is, for the mayor, I'd like to assign the resolution to number and read for passage.
Second.
Get a motion, second, any further discussion? All right, hearing done.
Mr. McClan?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yeah.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yeah.
Ms. Harmon?
Yes.
6-0. The resolution number will be 774. A resolution in support of continued improvements by the Carroll Boone Water District of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas. Whereas the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas purchases quality water in substantial amounts to meet its needs, and the Carroll Boone Water District, hereinafter referred to as the District. Under a memorandum of understanding, MOU, dated December 18, 1998. And whereas the MOU requires the District to make a continuing study of the water needs and expected future requirements of its customers, and provide raw water supply, storage, treatment, and transmission system expansion as required to meet those needs. And whereas the District's master plan update dated January 2019, prepared by the engineering firm of Olson Incorporated, identified recommended improvements required to meet the needs of the District's customers to be phased over the next 20 years, including Phase 1 improvements for power generation facilities, pumping and valve upgrades at the water intake facility, and continuing segments of a parallel water transmission line. And whereas the District may need to increase its bonded indebtedness to finance the projects. And whereas the memorandum of understanding requires approval of three of the four customer cities before continuing with expansion projects that would increase the District's bonded indebtedness. And whereas approval of the expansion projects by the customer cities will allow the District to continue providing quality water in substantial amounts to meet the customer needs. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, that the city hereby expresses its concurrence with the expansion projects identified in Phase 1 of the master plan referenced above.
All right, so maybe. All right, that brings us up, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next order of business is discussion of reserve with Ms. Harmon and Ms. Green.
Motion to discuss?
All right. Ms. Harmon?
Okay, so really with this, what I'm asking for here is, I know the city has not necessarily had a reserve over the last few years. But what I would like to see is a, more information from the mayor's office and/or involvement with city council in order to determine, I would love to be able to put something on the reserve that says you can't spend, so if we had $5 million, you couldn't bring it below $1 million, just because it would be nice to have that money there in case there's an emergency. But I think the bigger, the bigger thought is that it would be nice to know of some projects, or at least have a plan. So we have a master plan for the city, but we don't ever really have a plan of what is out there, or what we're thinking, or what we're planning, or what maybe the city may need if we had actual reserves. So we come to these meetings every, every couple of weeks, and we have an agenda. But to me, it doesn't seem like we're really planning as a, as a city council, forward-thinking whether, once we have reserves. So, does that make sense? Or does that, do you? I guess what I'm saying is, it would be nice to have a plan, to have involvement from city council, should we actually get to the point where we have a significant amount in reserves. And the reason I say that is because I have been told numerous times that, well, we used to have a huge reserve, but it was all spent. Well, what was it spent on, and why did we spend it all? So.
Mr. Clark, would you like to talk a little bit about the purpose of our reserves, and how, just because we do show a $5 million balance in our bank, doesn't this, and how that?
No, I understand what that is.
Relates. Because it, go ahead.
I, of course, we're looking at a total budget of $11 million. And so when I saw this on the agenda, I did a little research, and to see what is typical for reserves, and not addressing the issue of the planning and the things that you're talking about. I find that, you know, typical reserves for various cities range anywhere from 10% of what the operating budget might be, up to 27%. And so we're, we had, back in '16, I believe, or '17, we had a serious drain on our, on our cash. And so at that time, the mayor put in place, which is still in place, a freeze on the spending of the items, so that we could build this money back up. Now, in, back before I came, there were, I can't address those. I've heard that there were issues with the treatment plant, and whenever it was constructed, it resulted in another bond issue, and so on and so forth. And I don't know really anything about that. But at this point, my, and at this time that we were, we were in a, I felt in a cash crunch. I went to the mayor and said, "Look, we can't continue on. You need to tell me what to do." And so we, that's when he put the freeze in place. And so we've progressed forward since then, and seem to be in fairly good shape now. Going back to the planning on projects and stuff, which I hear planning, and the mayor discussing with the departments what they need and what that needs to be done, and there are plans, and for some of the, for the money that is here in the, in the financials, that you can see where we are. And we've progressed every year here for several years now. And so if you want reserves, I think that you need to sit down and determine, well, are there different classifications of the reserves in what areas? For instance, do you want it in water sewer, because water is definitely, you know, we couldn't function, the city couldn't function without adequate water? And sewer services. And then you kind of got to categorize it, I think, your reserves between the general fund and primarily water sewer. And so, and then, the thing about it is, too, with those, and most of you know this, but the, we have certain restrictions. The street fund, for instance, is, by state law, is an enterprise fund. And most of the money that comes into the street fund is turned back on gasoline taxes from the state. And so the money that goes in there. And so, the money that goes in there has to be used for streets, can't be taken out and used for any other purpose but streets. Water sewer is an enterprise fund also, and these funds are set up like this to be supposedly self-supporting, and so, but water sewer, for a long time, was not self-supporting, and once money is generated, like I said, in those funds, it can't be taken out and used for any other purpose. Now, over the years, and this started prior to eight years ago, and I don't know when it started, but the general fund, which includes fire, police, so on and so on and so on, has loaned to the water sewer fund close to a million dollars, and that's on the books as a loan, and there has been no payback on that at this point. And so, but if it's, if it's determined a contribution, and it's put in there, then there's no way to pay it back to pay expenses with the general fund if it ever starts making money. So, well, that being said, there, there are some projects that are discussed in, with department heads, and the mayor, and some fairly large, significant projects, and, but I can't really address those because I don't know what the status of those are at this time. So, I don't know if I'm answering any of your questions, or just rambling, or what, but we, we are in better shape financially right at this moment than we have been in the eight years that I've been here. And as I said earlier, if you look at the bank balances, you can see where we are, we've got quite a substantial balance, and we didn't have to tap, at the point that the mayor put the freeze on, we did not have to go and tap into any of those reserves, that I thought we were gonna have to start cashing CDs and so forth. And so, we've managed to come from that point. And why it was, why it was that, that way, of course, you can see our sales tax has continued to improve over the, over the years, and, and of course, that's our major revenue source, is the sales tax, as you know. But, we've, we've got, one of the bond issues almost paid off, and so, and with, with plans to continue that, and it'll be paid off, I think, at the end of this year. And so, I, again, don't know if I'm answering your question, or I'd be happy to try if you have something further.
Okay. I appreciate their, that, what we've done, or at least the city council, the mayor, putting the freeze in place. I think that the bigger question really is, at some point, if that reserve is large enough, and I'm not advocating for spending, I really am not, I would love for the city to save as much possible money as they can, because people are collecting, or people are paying that tax. So, at some point, in my mind, if we get to a certain level on reserves, we should be reducing our taxes at some point in the future, whether it be on water, whether or not be on sewer, whether or not, I mean, there are a lot of taxes that are collected by the city, by the county, by the state. The goal is that, in my mind, and this may not be everybody, but I've always felt that you should collect the amount of money that you need, and you should not collect more than what you need. Reserves obviously play into that, because if we have a major event or disaster that happens, then you do need those reserves. We can't budget exactly to the penny, I understand that. But I think in this town, the things that I hear constantly from people that live here are that the taxes are so high. We pay a lot in taxes to live here. Now, yes, we could go live somewhere else, but it would be nice to know that if we achieved a certain level on reserves, that we finally said, you know what, I think we can give some of this back, and maybe we don't need to be collecting as much. I don't know how that process works, and I don't know if I would ever get everybody to agree with me, but I do think it is a responsibility of the city council and of the city to realize when they have enough, or if they don't have enough, and to act accordingly. So, that's where I'm at, that's why I asked about it, and I can certainly come in and talk to you and see what things are outstanding, what we have overall, but that's why I'm bringing it up, because I do still feel like it is the responsibility of this group to be aware of those things, and to know when, you know, we're either collecting too much, or we're collecting the right amount, or we're collecting too little, and then make those adjustments.
I don't disagree with that at all, I'm just happy to think of something as you were speaking. Just, I think in 2011, we had a slide here in town.
Uh huh. And I've heard about that.
And that was, from what I understand, about a half million dollars to, to take care of that. We did get some, some money back from FEMA, I believe, but I don't know to what extent that was paid, but there are, and of course, we have to be prepared for contingencies that may-
Right.
-happen, other than a slide or something. But, nevertheless, I do not disagree with what you're saying at all, but I'm just trying to tell you where we are.
All right, thank you.
And how we got here.
Mr. Meyer?
Well, our water sewer system is very old, and needs constant improvements, and some lines are in need of being replaced right now. I don't see any, anything in the near future where we could actually say we could pay that loan back to the water and sewer plant, so, you know, one of the things, like you said earlier, the water and sewer is something we've got to have, and it's someplace that we need to keep that budget.
Well, it's, it's kinda like the, the solar gentleman you were speaking about earlier. Yes, a lot of the water line, and sewer lines are really old, but, and, and a lot of our streets need work and repairs, but as beautiful as the area is, we live in a part of the country that is extremely expensive, it's extremely difficult-
Of course.
...to put in, just because of the terrain and everything. It's just like building a road. For instance, in South Arkansas, it's easy to build a road, but up here, it's very, very difficult and expensive to build a road. And so, I mean, it's, we're, we're looking at even greater expense than, so-
Yeah. But, you know, folks that live here in town are environmentally conscious, and so, the leaky sewer pipes are going into the downstream, to those folks that are downstream from us, so, you know, we need to keep working on that particular problem before we start making cutbacks.
Mr. Thomas?
Yeah, I have three points I'd like to make. First, I'd like to speak up for my poor cousin, Public Works, because in 2012, there was a sales tax passed, which would improve, which would pay off some bonds, and improve the sewer and water structure. At some point after that tax was passed, the city decided to take, almost, it gets about one million a year, they're gonna take nine hundred thousand and put it into the general fund. They do that every year, correct? Then, they give eight hundred and fifty thousand back to Public Works, they loan it back to Public Works. You can't take money from someone and then loan it back to them, that's just not fair, and talk about how much money they owe you. What we need to do is to, to look at that sales tax, which I think is gonna be paid off in 2027, correct?
I have no-
But it, it could be sped up, and it's paid off earlier, and start looking at, you know, taking less and less of that money from Public Works, and if you don't take their money away from them, you're not gonna have to loan money to them. So, I'd just like to say, I don't think they borrowed as much as, as we say they have.
We'd have to take a look at what that sales tax issue actually said.
Yeah. Well, it had a little clause in there that said, it could, because that's how we pass the audit every year, there's a little clause in there that says the city can use that money for other, other purposes, and that's how it's happened. The second point I'd like to make is, with regards to planning, and, you know, projects and stuff, that, that's not just the mayor's responsibility, that is also our responsibility. And when we talked about the budget this year, you know, I, I mentioned, we need to start working on it very early, and we need to start identifying what, what we see as being the goals for the city. So, you know, it's, it's, it's partially our fault if we haven't been involved in that planning, and I'd like to say that we do have a council, that it doesn't matter how many meetings you have for them, or how many hours you ask them to come in, we all have always been there, it's just a matter of doing it, of just saying, we, we can be involved in planning, let's start meeting in June, to work on what we, what we identify as our goals, and how much money we're gonna need when, when the budget is developed. That's our responsibility. The third thing is, you know, how did this, how did they go broke, you know, in the past? They went broke because there was no information available to the city council people, everything was done strictly by the mayor, and it was almost, you know, just a table full of yes people over the years.
Not this guy here.
Who? Me?
Not this mayor.
Oh, and well, anyway, I have to say, when I came on in 2015, and Lonny and I, we were pretty much at loggerheads for a year, because it was traditional that, that the chief financial officer did not disclose any financial information to anyone, he always, he would tell me, and you've changed so much, so I'm gonna end up with a compliment here, but he would tell, he used to tell me, I work for the mayor, I don't have to tell you that, I work for the mayor, I don't have to tell you that, and I kept telling him, you work for the citizens of Eureka Springs, and, you know, you have changed, and now, you know, you give out everything that, that we ever ask you for, and it makes our jobs so much easier, and it allows us to be so much more involved, and I appreciate it so much. Thank you.
It, it might have been partial because of the circumstances under which I came and raised money.
Right, correct. Yeah.
I would also like to make note, too, and Mr. McClon can, can probably maybe back me up, or kind, you know, correct me. The bookkeeping system that we had did not lend itself, Bob, the council received the same information that Mr. Clark gives us today, but in a whole different, different format, that was so much harder to understand and to comprehend. We went through, at one time, four finance officers in two-year period. Now, that's one of the reasons we had a lot of problems, but that's in the past, and Mr. Clark helped us right now, and the council, along with getting, resolving and getting a finance report that everybody can read and understand.
Correct.
That was not there in 2011, 2012. So, anyway, when we start talking about projects, and I, I have several that I wanna bring to the council, and the council will be, you know, obviously, the ones who are gonna approve them or not, most of these are projects that our reserves can't, our reserves are for reserves. When we start spending those, it's like taking money out of your segment country, you can't replace it, and when you replace it to buy something, it's gone. And so, we gotta figure out a method of being self-sustaining, and making these investments in our, whatever we do, building, buildings, water, infrastructure, make sure that those are sufficient and self-sustaining, and that's the whole purpose, to me, of what our budget's about. So, but anyway, further comments? But be assured, I'm gonna be bringing y'all some information on some projects coming up, so. All right. Next order of business is, item number four, is Cruz in Eureka moped franchise application.
Motion to discuss.
Second.
Okay, we have, of course, a application for a moped franchise, this is with Mr. Steve Coe.
Yes, sir. There should be a packet that was left with every city council member, if they could go through.
If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. We are requesting a, a franchise to rent electric scooters in the town of Eureka Springs, the city of Eureka.
You're gonna be renting right on Center Street, correct?
Oh, Center Street, there's a site map, it's gonna be, it connects to the New Orleans Hotel.
Right. The motor, or gasoline, I guess, mopeds that are rented, you know, they take you out and make you, show some expertise before they turn you loose. Where, where will you do that?
We've got two spots, one there at the, and ours is gonna be a little easier to ride, of course, but we've got the, down at the, one of my, one of the partners in the business is Terry Blanton, who is the owner of the New Orleans Hotel. So, we've got two parking lots there, one at 66 Center Street, which he owns that parking lot, and then the parking lot right across from where the rentals are. So, if we have to walk them down to the other lot on 66 Center, we can do that, or we can see, a lot of people are already familiar with riding, and so, it's just kinda like riding a bike, but it's gonna be electric powered.
I have many bones broken that say it's not like riding a bike.
Okay.
Okay. I'm looking at the map, I don't understand where you're talking about the parking lots where you would have them demonstrate that they know what to do.
There is a parking lot almost right, just right down, right across the street from our location that we're renting from.
Okay, now, I'm, I'm trying to picture, I used to park back there years ago. So, you've got the hotel, you're at the end, almost to the end of Center Street, basically, before it's mountain, down on the right-hand side, down the slope a little bit, there is a little grassy knoll parking area, is that what you're talking about?
Well, he has, he owns 66 Center Street, which has several lodging facilities there, and there is a big parking lot there, and then depending on availability, we can also use the parking lot that, where the New Orleans parks their cars, 'cause it's not gonna take a lot to be able to, a lot of people aren't familiar, this is a fad that's really taken off, and so, we're different than everybody else, so, they cannot leave them on the street, they have to check them in and out at our facility at 16, at 16 Center Street, so-
Ten inch mark, right?
We'll know, and give them training on how to-
But that's what I'm trying to picture, where is this training at? Okay, here, here's your map, there's Center Street and the New Orleans.
Cross-
The part I'm talking about is down here.
Cross Mountain Street.
Oh, go, okay, that's, okay. So, you go all the way across to that little one, 'cause the only one I can go to-
And they will be provided down there, we'll walk it down there-
Right.
-or truck it down there, and then they demonstrate to us if they're ready to ride-
Okay, 'cause there actually is room there, 'cause the one I was talking about right there-
Right.
Um, no. Okay.
We will make sure that they are experienced enough to ride these before we let them out. They have to wear a helmet, and we're gonna have all the safety precautions that we can provide.
And have you talked with the guy who has the moped rentals? Have you talked with him at all?
Don't know if he's, no.
None of us know if he's gonna continue on, I just-
I do not know.
-know if he had talked or something.
No. Ours is completely different, because ours is electric.
Yeah, his is a plain old moped.
Now, are you talking about the hallway parking lot?
No, beyond.
66 Center-
Oh, okay.
There's a lodging.
Oh, right.
And Terry Blanton, the owner of the New Orleans Hotel-
Okay.
-owns 66 Center also.
Inside that house area, the parking area?
Right, it's got, yes.
Okay. All right. All right. Anybody else? Any questions?
I was going to ask about them being left around town, because there's places where it's, it's a nightmare.
It is a nightmare. And we would not, Eureka's too beautiful a place to have scooters all up and down the streets inside the box. So, they have to check it out at 16 Center Street and return it to 16 Center Street.
Otherwise, what are you going to do if they don't bring it back?
Well, I'm going to go find it because they'll have GPS and then they will have a credit card put up and they may end up paying for it.
That's what I wanted to know. You've got GPS on them, all right.
Mickey?
Um, I was trying to kind of go through your insurance stuff. I'm assuming you do have full coverage, so if they have an accident, they are totally covered?
We're more, yes, more insured than.
Okay. Like, trying to read is just impossible.
I know, there's a lot of information there.
Yeah.
Right. But yes, we have a lot of insurance because we have to protect ourselves as well as the people riding.
Right. And the city.
And the city. Yes.
I just have.
Okay, Ms. Harmon?
What's the age? What's your age limit or your minimum?
Do you have to be 16 to ride them?
Okay. And then, are you going to do this seven days a week, 365?
We'll do it, our business is open seven days a week, so we're going to be open probably seven days a week during what I'm going to say normal business hours. And they can't, they can't rent them at night, so they're only a daytime use.
Okay.
Does that make, does that answer the question? Yeah. And we want to be green. That's what we're trying to accomplish by doing the electric.
Yes, ma'am.
We have to make a motion to approve. I make a motion to approve this application.
I'll second that.
Okay. Further discussion? All right. Hearing done. All those in favor of this application for a moped franchise with Steve Koebe signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you for your support. Appreciate it.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Have fun.
Have fun, yeah.
That brings us to unfinished business, ordinance 2293 for the third and final reading, motion to discuss.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Believe we added some things to the last, on the last one, so any further discussion? Get a motion to approve ordinance 2293 on its third and final reading by title only? Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion that we suspend the rules and read ordinance number 2293 by title only for its third and final reading.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Harmon?
Now.
Mr. McClun?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Five-one. Ordinance number 2293, an ordinance increasing rates for services rendered by the water system of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, and providing an emergency clause.
Mr. McClun?
Like it. Make motion to be approved, ordinance number 2293 on its third reading.
Second.
Any further discussion? Our hearing done.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. McClun?
Yes.
Ms. Harmon?
Now.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Five-one.
All right. Brings us up to ordinance 2294, ordinance vacating alley between block three and block nine of Angle Street.
Motion to discuss.
Second.
All right. Any comments? Mr. McClun?
I'd like to make a motion that we suspend the rules and place ordinance number 2294 on second reading by title only.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. McClun?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Harmon?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Six-zero. Ordinance number 2294, an ordinance vacating an alley between block three and block nine and east of Angle Street in the magnetic bay survey.
I, go ahead. Yes, Mr. McClun?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve ordinance number 2294 on the second reading.
Second.
Further discussion? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? If it's, I want to back up to our last ordinance on the increasing water rates. We had an emergency clause on that. This council, this was on the water rates that we were getting from Carroll Building Water District. So, should we want Council Phil enact the emergency clause?
I make a motion that on ordinance number 2293 that we enact the emergency clause, yes.
I'll second that. All right. Any further discussion?
Mr. McClun?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Harmon?
Now.
Emergency clause. Because of the proposed water rate, because the proposed water rate increase is necessary for the efficient operations of the city of Eureka Springs and for the preservation of public peace, health and safety and continuance of public services, this ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from and after its passage and approval.
Thank you, guys. Sorry about that. All right. That brings us up to questions on, and dates on setting the parks workshops. We have not received any of the questions back from council regarding parks. I'd like to set a deadline of this Friday to receive those questions. And if so, then sometime a week after that, we could be, try to work and schedule a workshop, coordinate that between us and the council. So, if you guys can give us your questions by this Friday, then we'll go ahead and contact everybody and see if we can coordinate a workshop.
What if we don't have any?
That's all right.
Okay.
It's not a requirement, so it's not a test. The second item is I have talked to the hospital commission and they would, are willing to meet with us at any time, preferably at six o'clock in the evening for them to, for us to, no, not necessarily have a workshop, but bring us everybody up to date and let everybody know where we are with the hospital.
And it's awesome, these.
I know what y'all's schedule is, if you want to set a date today, tonight.
Works for me. Yeah, because it is exciting. For us long time.
It is.
It's going to take us back a lot.
Yeah.
I just have a question.
Okay.
When you, when you say that we don't have to set it up as a workshop, we do have to set up, don't we?
Well, it's going to be a workshop, but it's more of a discussion and them letting us know what's going on.
So, we're going to call it a workshop on the council?
It's what we're going to call it.
Call it a meeting.
Yeah.
Why don't you throw some dates up, Mr. Meyer?
Okay. Let me. Trying to see when this building isn't being used. We've got meetings on Wednesday and Thursday this week.
Thursday and next week.
Huh?
Thursday and next week's open.
Thursday of next week is open.
The fifth? The fifth of March?
Yes. March the fifth. How's that sound for everybody?
Fine with me.
Yeah, it'll work. All right. Let me verify that with the hospital and we'll get back to you, but tentatively we'll say the fifth of March.
At six.
At six. Yeah.
You're?
Yes.
I think Bobby's got his hand up.
He's busy. I'm waiting. I'd just like to make a comment on the parks workshops.
Okay.
The procedure was that we would submit questions to the parks commission.
Right.
We would get their answers back before the workshop. They're meeting Wednesday night. I'm wondering if maybe.
Thursday night.
Thursday night, somebody could make a deadline for them to get their answers back by maybe the next Friday.
Sure. Yep. Yeah, we can do, I mean, I'll, we'll make that a point.
Okay.
Yeah. All right. It brings to agenda setting. Anyone? Ms. Snyder?
Um, yeah, I'd like to add a discussion of the property problem that Craig brought up, and I'd like to have the presence of both Dwayne and Bobby there so we can thoroughly look into this and discuss it, because that's not right. I'll second that.
What was the, um, address? Hold Street?
Yeah, Fuller Street. All right. Anybody else? Anything? Mr. Thomas?
Yeah, I have two. I'd like to discuss getting the three commissions that do quarterly reports to the council, having those on the agenda every quarter for us to look at officially.
I'll second that.
I'll second that.
We don't need to have that. I mean, I will make sure that's done and we don't need to put that on the agenda.
Well, I mean, we get them individually, but we never take a look at them at the table as a group. That's what I'm talking about.
You want to do all three at one time?
Yeah. You're just to take a look at their, their written reports and.
Yep.
All right.
I'm not saying to do them next week, what I'm saying is we should talk about like for the first quarter, we should expect them at the second meeting in April. You know, for the second, for the second quarter, we would expect them for the second meeting in July, so that we would have them on our agenda and they would be in our hands for that meeting.
Why don't I just go ahead and tell them?
Well, you can do that, but council hasn't approved it. That's just my idea.
Well, they got to come to the council, council. When they come before the council, up here, there'll be, you know, quarterly report. At that time, the council can do whatever they want with it when they, when they come up for the report to the council. I'm not sure that, not sure what you're asking for, Mr. Thomas.
Well, what I'm, what I'm saying is if we've been discussing the quarterly reports at the council meeting, I missed it. And I want, I want to discuss next, at the next council meeting, all of us agreeing that we will have the quarterly reports public and look at them publicly.
Legally, they're supposed to anyway.
I know, and we haven't been doing it.
Well, that's, that's my fault and also.
Oh, no, that's.
We'll make sure we'll get it to you.
That's our fault.
That's no problem. There's no need to have it on the agenda for discussion. I mean, we'll put it on the agenda though, if you, that's what somebody seconded, I think.
No. Well, I would draw my second.
Why?
To have it.
All right, go ahead and do it, Bob.
All right, then I'll leave my second out.
All right.
I'm so confused.
Anything, what was your second out, Bob?
My second one, and I drew you guys a picture.
Oh, all right.
I would like Mr. Weaver to present to us for future use by this council and Parks Commission members. If we have a hypothetical park and we have a hypothetical gift from people, what are the steps from A to B to Z for getting this parcel gifted to the city and made a part of this park? I want to know what that process is.
I'll second that.
Somebody else had a quote, something on the agenda? Mr. Meyer, did you have something?
Yeah, just police and fire report.
Okay.
I'll second that.
We should get that. I'm sorry, I hadn't, did you not get the, I sent you a copy?
No, I mean like a monthly from the police and fire.
We send that out, I tried to send that out monthly.
Well, it can be here and so we can ask them questions about the report. It'd be nice.
You want them here every month?
Yeah.
You want the actual people here?
Yeah.
Why?
To answer questions.
You going to pay them extra money? You're asking a lot of our guys.
The place I've ever lived, the police gave a report to the city council once a month.
We provide a report. Okay, everybody, I don't know.
Okay, I'll make a motion. I'd like to put it on the agenda and we can vote on it.
All right. Do I have a second?
I'll second that. Just to, you want to talk about it next week and we vote if they're going to do it or not?
Yeah.
I'll second that.
Okay.
That's all I wanted to do, too.
All right. Anything else? All right. Counsel comments. Mr. McClun?
I have nothing.
Ms. Meyer?
It was a good winter conference. Learned lots of stuff.
Ms. Harmon?
Um, yes, so today's Monday, Wednesday night in the auditorium, we're going to have an educational event hosted by the CAPC. We'd like to invite everyone, I know there have been emails that have been sent out to collectors and whatnot, but it is an open invitation to anyone in Eureka Springs, any citizen to attend. Here in the auditorium at six o'clock, we will have a brief presentation by Paradise, which is the ad agency now that we have under contract through the CAPC to advertise for Eureka Springs. So, city council is invited as well as the mayor, as staff are too, but we'd love to see you here on Wednesday night at six o'clock.
It will be in the auditorium proper prior to the meeting, actual meeting that will be held.
Good. Ms. Snyder?
Um, no. It's my birthday and I had a great one with my boys. Finally, 26 years and both boys got to celebrate with me. It was worth the wait.
Happy birthday.
Thank you.
Ms. Green?
Happy birthday, Mickey. I know the world is amazed that I made it another year.
And Mr. Thomas?
Well, I enjoyed seeing Harry in Little Rock and the mayor and I avoided each other somehow. We just never, our paths never crossed down there, but it was, it was, the topics weren't that great, but I enjoyed getting to talk to all the other people around there and meeting other people and interacting with them.
As a public service reminder, this little badge I think here, vote early. Early voting has opened in Arkansas. Our polling place now is the St. Elizabeth Parish Center up on Passion Play Road. Voting began on February 18th and will run through March 2nd, Monday, Friday, eight to six and Saturday, 10 to four. So, if you're interested to avoid the crowds, get out and vote early. There'll also be a public meetings for all the bars, downtown bar, restaurant and convenience store owners who hold an ABC license to sell alcoholic beverage tomorrow at 10:00 a.m. in the auditorium. This is a working session to cover the entertainment district rules and regulations. ABC representative and the chief of police will be in attendance to discuss and work through any of the questions that may arise. So, you know, now that we've got the mighty draw drawing to a close, we're a little bit